Good afternoon, everyone. Go ahead and call to order the work session today. Commissioner Russell, or Director Russell. I'm sorry. I voted you out, I'm sorry.
Look, I was trying to figure it out. I'm like, okay. Woo. Uh-uh. Good afternoon, everyone. Our first case is a Chesapeake Bay exception request by Mr. and Mrs. Stone. It's a request to construct a swimming pool within the 100-foot buffer of the Resource Protection Area at 2811 Acres Road. The property is owned General Residential District, QR, and is further described as Tax Map 773 Parcel 14. The future land use map of the Build 1 Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property for low to medium density, single-family residential uses. And Mrs. Valerie Malzone will make the staff presentation. This case was deferred from your October 7th meeting.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
My name's Valerie Malzone. I'm Principal Planner for the City of Portsmouth. As Dr. Russell said, this is a Chesapeake Bay exception request that was deferred from the October 7th Planning Commission Public Hearing. So at that hearing, Planning Commission requested that planning staff provide the permitting history for all other swimming pools constructed on the properties surrounding Lake Gene. And I will provide you a summary of that information now. Staff found three existing in-ground swimming pools on the following properties at 310 Sterling Point Drive, 2945 Replica Lane, and 2921 Replica Lane. Although the construction date of the existing pools could not be determined, staff found that all of the subject pools were constructed prior to the city's earliest aerial imagery, which was taken in 2003. In addition, staff found no records of zoning or building permits issued for the construction of the pools from 2000 to the present, and no records of any of the subject pools obtaining a Chesapeake Bay exception from 1989 to the present. It's possible that the swimming pools were constructed without the required zoning and building permits. However, most of the houses in this area were constructed in the 1960s and 70s, so it's just as likely that the existing pools predate the adoption of the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Act in 1989 and the adoption of the management regulations in 2001. So therefore, staff finds that the presence of the existing swimming pools in the area would not influence the outcome of this application. Staff recommends denial of the request, as staff is unable to support the development with within the 100-foot Resource Protection Area. It does not meet all of the exception criteria outlined in Portsmouth City Code Section Staff finds that the proposal is not in harmony with the purpose and intent of the Chesapeake Bay ordinance, and land development is not limited to the minimum area necessary to provide for a principal structure, which is a single-family dwelling and necessary utilities. The applicant has provided additional application materials for your consideration. They have been provided to each commissioner prior to the work session. To date, Planning Department staff has not received any public comments regarding this application, and the applicant will provide a presentation during the public hearing as well. So that concludes my presentation. I will now stand by for any questions.
Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Melvin in particular, I know you had some thoughts about this last month. Did you have any questions at this point?
Thank you for the update. I mixed a lot of more form of the situation. For Commissioner, I don't know if I want to set a precedence here. I know each individual cases, you know, we should own it by itself, but if we approve here, it was to stop neighbors to put their own application in for us to say no. It seems like a lot of court battles ahead. But another note, there's this, I don't know, I'm just assuming, does the state of Virginia have some type of environmental score for localities that impact, like, funding? Is that a thing?
Not that I'm familiar with.
Okay. Just wanted to ask, because that would be another factor.
The bay, the Chesapeake Bay has, is scored on water quality, and the scoring is, it's alphabetical A, B, C, D, E, F, the same, you know, excellent, average, good, fair, poor. And that is done periodically, but not each individual locality.
And how does that impact localities? Like, if you, let's say, let's say we scored a C. I don't know what ours is. I think it is.
The bay, the bay overall, the Chesapeake Bay receives a score.
Understood.
And so what I have seen over the course of my career, if the trending is improved, then the management measures relative to what localities are required to implement remain static. If the trending is the other way, they tend to get more restrictive.
Okay. And I'm guessing, when was this? I guess Act passed?
First passed?
Mm-hmm.
Ninety?
1989.
1989. And in the update, I, so I pulled it out and wrote it down, 2001, the management measures were adopted.
Was, was there a specific event or events that treated, like, was the bay, I'm not sure of the history, was the bay at some point, like, really dirty? Like, was the score low? Do we know why?
So Virginia, Maryland, North Carolina, all adopted Bay Act Regulations at about the same time. I should remember that, because I graduated college in 89, so that was like my first introduction to planning. And overall, it was just a heightened sensitivity to water quality and the value of our waterways to our quality of life and even economic development. So in terms of performance, it's improved, but the last time I actually reported the scoring here last year, it was like C, like C+. It's not, it's, you know, which suggests that we still have a ways to go.
Okay. Thank you. Yep. Just didn't want to set a precedence here. That's all I have, but thank you. Thank you for the information.
Commissioner Taylor, any questions?
No questions.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
For our next case?
Yes, ma'am.
Our next case is used permit number 2511 for the Newport area. It's a request by Invenable to construct townhouse dwellings and multifamily dwellings on the property at 3741 Elliott Avenue in the Conditional Multifamily Urban Residential Zoning District. The property is owned by Newport Property Investors LLC and is further identified as Tax Map 524 Parcel 1. The future land use map of the Build 1 Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates the property for mixed residential uses, and Mrs. Valerie Malzone will provide the staff recommendation.
Hi again. I'm Valerie Malzone. I'm a Principal Planner with the City of Portsmouth. This application is a use permit to construct townhouse dwellings and multifamily dwellings on the property at 3741 Elliott Avenue as part of the development of Phase 2 of Newport. The Newport community encompasses approximately 200 acres between Bydowee Golf Course and Portsmouth Boulevard and consists of three development phases shown here. Phases 1B and 1A have been completed, and today's application pertains to Phase 2, shown in blue, and this part of Phase 1B that's hashed out, that wasn't constructed as the original part of Phase 1B. The Newport properties are subject to the Newport Design Guidelines, which were proffered as conditions of previous rezonings of the properties in the early 2000s. The Guidelines generally aim to create an adaptable residential neighborhood while maintaining architectural quality and compatibility with the surrounding area. The subject property is approximately 58.5 acres in size and is in Conditional Multifamily Urban Residential, or URMK. The site is currently vacant and is largely wooded. The surrounding area is predominantly residential in character. Single-family developments, including the Woodland Park Neighborhood and Phase 1 of the Newport community, are located to the south and southeast. Additional single-family residences and public institutional uses are located to the east. Vacant property planned for residential development of Phase 3 of Newport is located to the north across the Interstate 264 corridor, and Rivers Casino is located to the west. For this phase of development, the Newport Design Guidelines recommend a mix of housing types with traditional architecture that transition from higher density to low density from east to west. While the applicant had to make some minor changes to the original layout to meet current stormwater management requirements, the Planning Department found that the proposed layout plan shown on the right was substantially similar to that of the original plan shown on the left. The applicant has slightly modified their request since each commissioner's package was distributed. They requested that nine of the townhouse dwellings be changed to an additional multifamily parcel with nine units. I will be describing the amended request, and a memo also describing these changes further was distributed to each commissioner prior to the public hearing. Here's the new, this is the parcel E, that was previously townhomes. The applicant is requesting a use permit to construct a total of 131 townhouse dwellings and 169 multifamily dwelling units as recommended by the Newport Design Guidelines. The proposed development also includes 199 detached single-family dwellings. These dwellings are permitted by right and are not included in this use permit request. Five parcels, Parcell A through E, will contain a total of 169 multifamily dwellings to be sold as condominiums. The multifamily dwellings will utilize the design standards for stacked townhomes designated as Product A in the Newport Guidelines.
Oh, my God.
And 20-foot townhomes designated as Product B in the Newport Guidelines. While both products are described as townhomes and will resemble traditional townhouse dwellings, the units are classified as multifamily dwellings within the zoning ordinance since multiple units share a single lot. Stacked townhomes, Product A, go back, will be four-story linear buildings that contain three bedrooms and three bathrooms per dwelling unit. Each dwelling unit will have a rear-loaded, single-car garage. Proposed 20-foot townhomes, or Product B, will be three-story traditional townhouses with three bedrooms and up to three bathrooms. Each unit will have a rear-loaded, double-car garage. In addition, the applicant proposes to create 131 townhouse parcels also developed with the 20-foot wide townhomes, or Product B. These units are classified as townhouse dwellings within the zoning ordinance since each townhouse unit is located on an individual lot. Proposed public rights-of-way variable widths will provide circulation throughout the development, and 20-foot private alleys will provide access to residents' rear-loaded garages. A homeowners association will maintain all private roads and common areas. A Traffic Impact Analysis, or TIA, was conducted in 2004 to evaluate the Newport community on the surrounding roadway network. There were three recommended improvements identified within the TIA. Two of these were incorporated into the surrounding network during development of Phase 1, and the proposed development here does not trigger the third recommendation. The future land use map of the Build 1 Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates the subject property for mixed residential uses. Staff is recommending approval of the applicant's request with the recommended conditions. Staff finds that the proposed development meets the recommendations of both the Comprehensive Plan and the Newport Community Design Guidelines. The proposed development will provide an adaptable neighborhood with one, within one of Portsmouth's largest developable areas while maintaining architectural quality and compatibility with the surrounding area. Staff has provided a list of amended proposed conditions. An error in the condition regarding building height was brought to the attention of staff by the applicant and was subsequently removed. The maximum building height permitted by the Newport Guidelines is 55 feet rather than 45 feet, so you were provided a list of amended proposed conditions. The applicant has expressed interest in removing or amending some of the remaining conditions related to density, the installation of video cameras, and the use permit expiration extension date. The applicant will provide a brief summary of this request during the public hearing. To date, no public comments have been received on this request, and I will now stand by for any questions.
Commissioners, any questions?
Can you go back to the slide that showed the phases?
Yes. It might be easier, do you have the clicker to go back?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, you're good. They just have the little remote. There we go. Can you go back to the second slide? Ah, keep going. Ah, that one.
Yes. Okay. So the spot south of Phase 2 is where the Woodland Park homes are at right now.
Yeah, this is Woodland Park.
This company is different from that company that's building Woodland Park?
The developer, I believe, is different, but that is constructed by Ryan Holmes, the, as the builder, so I don't know if that's the same as Phase 2.
Okay. I'm speaking to the community members in Phase 1B. So that, I'm guessing, that used to be old warhousing that the builders built on top, but the pipes weren't replaced and they're old, and members here have said that the city has sent letters about the pipes being old, they know the pipes are old, that may be cause effect for, like, you know, water, the water that they're retaining. In Phase 2, has the city noted that it may be similar to, this, this area, I'm assuming pipes run underneath that, I'm not sure, has the city, has the city noted that, you know, this could be the same situation, that old pipes running underneath ground could cause problems for future residents that live here? That's, that lives like, the same as residents that live in Phase 1B?
What, what kind of pipes are we talking about? Are we talking covert pipes? Are we talking about?
Sewer?
So, it, the type of pipe, it doesn't matter for this reason. If the project is approved and it moves forward through our development review process, which is our cycling process, and all of those issues are vetted through that process, right? So my, my question for what types of pipes are we talking about typically for long, they, they have a life expectancy of, you know, the, so culverts, the, you know, your concrete piping drainage, those, they're going to have a life expectancy that is beyond the expectancy of the dwelling units. Now, the, I, we couldn't be talking about at this point the internal piping of the structures themselves, right? That, I mean, those, those end up being, we're in terror, I, you know, I mean, I, you know, just depending upon the age of your home, you have to plan for the maintenance of, of those types of issues. So, but with respect to infrastructure, it's going to be vetted in our site plan and development review process, but the life expectancy of those types of improvements are significant.
What is, what is the life expectancy? Can you educate me? What's the life expectancy of the?
Of a concrete covert pipe?
Yes, I guess.
Probably more years than I will live.
Okay. Because I'm just wondering, because, you know, that there was emails sent out from the city that their pipes, that the city knows that their pipes are old and that there may be some problems there. So I just want us, if we do pass this, to be aware of that, so that when we do conduct the, the survey, whether the engineers are, surveyors are, they can look at that, because I don't want residents from this, this, you know, Phase 2 to have the same problem and not be notified.
I have a point of clarity I need. You said, you mentioned on the Phase 1B, there's, there's not homes in 1B, is there?
Yes, there is. Yes, there is. Yep.
Yeah.
Right there, and on the right, they built a whole.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the tax sale. Okay, not the, the top part.
Oh, oh.
Okay, okay. So you're, so you're saying that residents are having issues, is it pipes or is it just standing water issues?
Pipe, yep. It was a, it was a, a letter from the city saying how they know that their pipes are, that are old.
That would have to be sewage. There'd have to be sewage lines.
I don't know where pipes, but that's what they, they mentioned.
Now, I know that there's sewage line issues in the surrounding older homes.
Mm-hmm. And that used to be, they mentioned, like, war, warhousing homes that were knocked down twice over, over the hundreds of years, and then the homes were built on top of that, that lot there where the school was at, all around, all around there.
You talked about that in your part.
Yep. What is it called?
It's called the Academy, well, it's called the Academy Park.
Academy Park. And now it's Newport at Victory, so I just want to make sure, I just want to make sure.
I guess that's what my computer's coming at, is the infrastructure, the infrastructure improvements that are done in these areas as these new developments are built.
They're supposed to be responsible for that.
Yeah, that's on the builder, right?
I just want to make sure that we, we look into it and that that doesn't happen for Phase 2.
Because I live next to Phase 1A, not in the new houses, but in the old houses, where we have the worst. Every, every few months, another neighbor is getting lines redone. So I know that the older existing houses, but as these new ones are built, is my understanding that part of that process is that infrastructure.
It's definitely part of the process. I can speak to that from experience, and it usually falls on the builder to upgrade the lines.
So I guess my question becomes more of that letter, and if the letter was valid, I mean, it's sent out, yes, but what, what was it actually covering? I, I think that would be something interesting for us to look at, but it's also something important for us to bring up to the builder, that there's integrity behind the infrastructure improvements that are done as they're building in Phases 2 and 3.
Okay, let me weigh in, please, if you don't mind. Would the engineering respond?
This wasn't a question of engineering, this was...
No, I know, but I'm answering the question now.
Would the engineer respond to what?
This entire project. And I think you know, I have a problem with our city departments not responding when we send out by way of our planning director for input, and they don't respond.
I don't think we sent out for something for them.
Oh, we always send it out.
Like, this would, I think what he's talking about is an existing...
It doesn't matter. Engineering should be responding on this type of project.
If only the school board responded.
Did the school board respond this time?
They responded, yeah.
Yeah.
I would, I would just reach out to the, the community there, the HOA, and ask them about that letter from, from the city.
We need to reach out to the engineering department, too.
For more context. I don't know where that letter came from.
Yeah, it doesn't matter where the letter came from. Our responsibility, while we pay taxes, and when our planning director sends out the request to all of the pertinent departments, those departments who are having it, having any type of input, which they will, they should be responding to the Planning Commission, and do not just say, "No comment."
Yeah, so whether it is...
I know I just got here, but I was ready.
Thank you. Whether it's orders, sewage, I just, this, it doesn't matter, but...
Need to respond.
We just need to figure out what's going on in that, in that community so that we're prepared for whatever is going to happen in Phase 2, and if there's nothing, good. If there is something, then we can look into it. And then, number three, I don't know how, I don't think we play a role in this, but the school, the school board, they said that they would need some additional builds and to help them out with the amount of children. How, how does that play a role in this? Is there some, is there something that you, as bang director, Dr. Russell, would work with the other departments to accommodate the additional children that will be in this area and going to school in this, in this area?
We will share the information, as we did with commissioners verbatim, to the council members. That, all of this feedback from the interdepartmental comments influences, potentially influences the recommendation. For staff, it did not influence our recommendation for support of the project, and then this becomes a budgetary, potential budgetary impact as the units come online. Because it wouldn't be, is it 490?
I forgot, yeah, I forgot. It was like 241.
241 students are expected. That's not going to be 241 students all at the same time.
Okay. Just want to make sure, because if, for example, let's just say 50 students that were elementary school have to go to the school that's right there in Phase 1B, is there enough room? Like, I don't know. Yeah, so I don't even know how I obtain this information, how we would be better informed to make recommendations that we can let the council know.
So now they know, and they have to forecast and prepare for that, because that's on the schools, that's on the public schools to, to actually say, "Okay, we need to rezone, we need to build." Like, they are informed. We, we're not empowered to build the schools or any of that, but now that they have that information, it's their responsibility to prepare for that as they know this is coming.
Okay.
Okay. Now, let me weigh in again. That's not accurate. Rising ships lift all boats at no time because the city funds the school system. So we are privy to have input, not we, I'm talking about council now.
100%, yeah.
They will have privy and have input in any project that is going to require additional funding by the school system to build schools. So we can't look at this as the left hand and the right hand. We're all council, all part of the same body, and the body is the council. So whatever happens here with us, I'm so, as you know, I'm very focused on making sure every department that is supposed to have input, that they are doing that, because they are not doing it. And I'm, I'm addressed in as Assistant City Manager now, they are not doing it. They are doing a no comment, no comment, no comment. And that is not how you conduct total business.
100%.
We are not individual appendages. We are all one of the same head, and the head is City Council. And we, and I'm not talking about us this time, Planning Commission, but I'm talking about the various city departments have to do their part, and they just cannot respond to the planning director and say, "No comment." Because when they do that, they are in violation of their authority under our city manager, who has to report to City Council. That's all I'm going to say. I'm finished for now.
Definitely. I think, I think, to your particular question, on the Planning Commission side, we've reported the possibility that he's coming. So when it gets to council, council has an umbrella oversight to, to have more influence. But we've reported the information, and it's their responsibility to use that information that we've reported to make those budgetary decisions.
Perfect. That's all, that's all I want to thank you.
Commissioner Taylor, any questions or comments?
No.
Commissioner Jiggs, Jimmy?
I've said all I need to say.
All right. Perfect. Thank you, Director Russell.
Okay. Play some musical chairs for a minute. Let's see. I don't want her to, I'll meet you halfway.
I think it's twins.
Want to share with you a presentation that Planning Staff has done twice before. We did it with our Economic Development Authority as well as our City Council, and it is our proposal for implementation of, a partial implementation of the recommendations that have come out of the innovation plan that was adopted by City Council last fall. Our ask today specifically is that the Planning Commission approve a resolution that would allow us to bring forward a proposed amendment to the Portsmouth zoning ordinance regarding the Innovation District to include specific standards for development and the list of permitted uses along the High Street corridor that is within the Link boundaries. So the draft overlay ordinance for the Link District includes standards for building form, how close the buildings can be to the public right-of-way, the maximum height of buildings within the district, as well as density, and it itemized permitted uses along the corridor that are consistent with the innovation plan. Those permitted uses include a propensity towards mixed-use development, maker space, commissary kitchen... uses include, uh, a propensity towards mixed-use development, maker space, commissary kitchens, uses that really support entrepreneurial initiatives. Uh, conversely prohibited uses in the proposed ordinance include gasoline sales, vehicle service, uh, entities, uh, crematories, park and ride, uh, entities. Um, driveways along the high street corridor are discouraged because we want to encourage the ped bike, uh, atmosphere and safety along the corridor, uh, and design, um, standards that are pedestrian oriented, uh, and lean towards urban form. We had a decision to make, uh, regarding the the recommendations in the innovation plan. And so it's very purposeful in sharing with you that it was adopted by, um, you and city council, uh, just a year ago, right? And so that doesn't seem like a long time, but so much has changed in a year. And what has changed in that course of a year is just our exposure and our experiences to different, um, communities and different organizations. So I'll talk specifically about the two that I was involved in. So I participated with, uh, Mayor Glover, uh, in a program at the Harvard Design School where we actually presented our innovation district plan to a group of renowned designers, urban designers throughout the country and internationally to gain feedback on, um, our implementation goals that are supported in large measure by the RACE grant, um, which really speaks to the transportation improvements along the corridor. Um, that experience proved or provided some very different recommendations than those that are captured in the adopted plan. And then most recently, uh, the council, uh, group of stakeholders from the community to include our economic development authority, um, business owners, uh, representatives, community Y did a, I think it was two, I think it was three days, three days, two, 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 two days on a bus to Greenville, South Carolina. Greenville is touted and renowned for reinventing its main street and, uh, it's, it's a beautiful, um, community today. It was my first trip to Greenville. Uh, their main street corridor is alive and vibrant, uh, with significant investment, mixed uses and very pedestrian oriented. And we would be, uh, remiss if having participated in that experience, not taking advantage of an opportunity, um, that is presented by our blank slate for the innovation corridor, which is that area from, uh, the intersection of, uh, High Street and Effingham to the MLK corridor to, uh, not incorporate some of those new experience, observations and learnings. And that's what we want to do. And that's why we're proposing an option A followed by an option B for implementation of the ordinance. One of the things that we're keenly aware of is that the existing ordinance permits by right uses along the corridor that are not envisioned in the current plan, right? There's if if, uh, uh, for a new development opportunity or even a redevelopment opportunity, if someone came forward and wanted to develop the property in a manner consistent with their desires, but not consistent with our vision, there's minimal that, if anything that we can do to stop that. And so there is, therein lies the sense of urgency to go move forward with adopting the recommendations that came out of the innovation plan for the ordinance as it relates to specific uses, what would be permitted uses, um, and prohibited uses. And we can do that rather quickly, uh, cause that language is is already, uh, adopted. As a matter of fact, we've left it in front of you, uh, at your, uh, table seats, uh, not adopted, that language has already been presented and approved. It was developed in partnership with the community group that, uh, participated in the public engagement sessions around the innovation plan, um, and our consultant partner Benchmark. So we're proposing to do that with your permission. We would advertise for a public hearing for that at your, um, January, am I right, Mrs. Jackson, January, January meeting to be followed, uh, as as quickly thereafter to review by the city council. In tandem, we would stand up a stakeholder group, uh, certainly would invite, uh, all of those parties that participated in the first body of work, extend that to include, uh, others. And I don't want to limit it, but I think we definitely would want representation from the EDA, representation from the council, representation from property and business owners, uh, in the downtown area as well as our entrepreneurial community to help us design and develop the design standards for the district. Um, and that is the part where we would include our new learning opportunities, our new experiences from Harvard and our visit to Greenville. And so, uh, the easy part, I think, because there's not a body of work that needs to, uh, a lot of attention to bring it forward for the public hearing, uh, we'd ask that you approve the resolution that is before you today, um, that would allow us to go ahead and advertise this for your subsequent action. And with that, I'm more than happy to answer any questions from commissioners.
Commissioners, any questions?
Yes, I have a question. I have probably a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I know you all visited Greenville, South Carolina.
Mm-hmm.
How long were you all there?
Um, we're there, uh, I would say a whole day and, um, I'd say, I would say a day and a half, probably about a good ten to twelve hours.
Day and a half. Did you all have the opportunity to stay overnight?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Um, my next suggestion is this, before we take the motion, and I'm sure you're aware that our former executive director for the Portsmouth Redevelopment Housing Authority is now head of the housing authority in Greenville, North Carolina. Some people may not know there's a Greenville, South Carolina and a Greenville, North Carolina. Um, when you were mentioning the various partners, you you did not mention Portsmouth Redevelopment Housing Authority, but most definitely they would be a critical partner in this as well as if there's opportunity, I know how budgets are with troweling, but if there is opportunity to visit Greenville, North Carolina, uh, and certainly have dialogue with Monsel Bland, who's now executive director in Greenville, North Carolina for the, for their redevelopment housing authority and partner, strong partner towards with our local Portsmouth Redevelopment Housing Authority. That is a critical piece of the puzzle.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any additional questions? A quick question I had, what, um, current, um, uses would be eliminated?
Uh, to, 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 I don't have that. Prohibited uses, gasoline sales.
Okay, so it's just those.
Service repairs. Those are the types, um, single family, not that residential wouldn't be permitted. We're looking at, um, residential on top of, um, uh, office retail, um, type uses.
So office and retail, would it be like, would the mixed use, would office retail be available that way?
Oh, yeah.
Does not just stand alone?
Yes.
Okay.
Right. We call it like street activation. So you're, you know, the activities along the street that pedestrians can partake of in the storefronts and.
Live here, work here, play here.
Yes, yep, absolutely. Sound like, sound like a planner.
Yeah, I have one more question. Have you had the opportunity in recent, I say, in recent weeks to meet with the executive director for Portsmouth Redevelopment Housing Authority? I know your, I know your schedule is busy, but I was just curious.
Yeah, we, we actually worked together quite a bit. I was, um, yeah, we missed, um, Ms. Winston.
Yes, Alisa Winston.
Did attend. She was, uh, one of the participants in the Greenville trip.
That's good to know. That's good to know. Uh, and certainly, I'm, I'm sure you're going to keep her involved in this, specifically mentioning that, because they, they drive a lot of what happens in this city is driven by, as we have learned from experience.
Yes, ma'am.
Some bruises for the city of Portsmouth. So that's good to know. Thank you for that information.
Okay. The next item is, um, commissioners, you were given a copy of a presentation regarding vacant undeveloped land enforcement that are last needed. And, um, I didn't want to assume that you brought it with you, so I, uh, we copied it for you. And so let me, say this as delicately as I know how, that, you know, the, the, the gist of this conversation is Taylor, um, uh, suggested that we talk about just what are some of the, um, development opportunities for large tracts in the city of Portsmouth. And so we identified, um, several. Uh, I want to share with you that they are all private properties. And so, you know, our conversation, uh, relative to these pieces, we'd like to be as discreet as possible in, you know, really talk about the, the, uh, we'll give it about ten minutes or so, Commissioner G, um, with the importance of, um, knowing where these opportunities are and really encouraging the development of our remaining large tracts for the highest and best use. Uh, so our conversation, we'd like to speak to them about, um, what the current land use recommendations for these pieces are. Um, and that's, that's it. Because they are, they are privately owned and ultimately it is up to the property owner to decide when, um, and, uh, if they ever intend to develop these pieces. And so if we could speak to them relative to the parcel, uh, location, if you have questions, we're more than happy to try to answer those for you.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm the question for some lady on the phone. Is it possible to also get the list? And I think we had to be full of the city-owned properties, they get that all day open.
We, we can, mm-hmm.
No, that would be critical.
Okay.
To have that information.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Taylor?
No, I just was, um, I do know it's available online, I believe.
Usually through EDA, probably.
Yeah, it's a list online, too.
We can, we can, we can provide it.
I'm gonna kill some old trees.
Understood, yes, ma'am.
One quick question I had, as you look at, uh, the particular one that's, uh.
What page?
Uh, page eight. Page number is a great thing. Um, was this one included in the presentation that we had earlier with the phases of Newport or is, or was that just, uh, south of two sixty-four?
So I'm going to defer to Valerie, um, Mrs. Malzone, because we have, this is a piece that is, um, being considered for development.
Ah, okay.
Not necessarily this.
North of two sixty-four, that's phase three.
Yeah.
And then south of two sixty-four is phase two, which we talked about today. So.
So that's that same private owner there?
Yes.
Okay.
That leaves another question. Can you also get the information from Ms. Winston for what they have?
The housing authority? Yes.
As we know, they have properties. I know, I think city council got it once before.
That's the one.
EDA may have it, but, but EDA may not have all of the pieces. So we need to, once again, partner with Portsmouth Redevelopment Housing Authority to see those lands that they have that fall under possibilities.
Yes, ma'am. We'll provide that information.
Okay, thank you.
Has there already been discussions with some of these, um, property owners?
They're, um, over the years, I'd say, say yes, uh, as they have expressed interest, um, in what the potential is for the development of the, their property. But that's, that nothing is imminent, right? It's, um, proposed for development.
I mean, a perfect example is the one we just looked at where they have it in their timeline. They have their roadmap for phase three. Um, but that's going to depend on how phase two sells.
Is the one on page four, is that owned by the church or is that owned by another company?
So this one, um, is privately held. Um, that, we believe the highest and best use because of its proximity to the water is high-end residential. Um, our, um, sources suggest that the property owner has no interest in selling or developing the property.
I have a question for city attorney Jeff Miller. Cause I'm a little uncomfortable with the discussion because we are talking about privately owned properties. Uh, I would like you to weigh in, cause I know there are ramifications and you want to make sure we don't move outside of, um, an area that could get us in trouble.
Sure. Well, you know, certainly we have, we have no ability to force.
I can't hear you, sir.
We have no ability to force any of these owners to do anything in particular with the properties.
Right. But I feel, I guess I feel a little uncomfortable about us even discussing properties that are not under the city's purview. That, I guess that's, that's what I want you to speak to.
I think it's okay to discuss from a, from a very broad, uh, wish list standpoint or what types of, um, things you'd like to see, but, uh, you know, but, but of course you're correct that we shouldn't go too specific on anything. Um, and it should be just a general discussion about the city's improvement in the future.
Thank you for your response.
No additional questions?
Thank you. The BCA?
Yes.
Good afternoon, commissioners. I am Trevon Boone, zoning administrator for the city of Portsmouth. In pursuant to section fifteen point two dash two, three, one, zero of the Virginia Code, the zoning administrator shall notify the local planning commissions of applications received for special exceptions and variances. The planning commission may send a recommendation to the board, appear as a party at the hearing. We have six agenda items scheduled for public hearing before the board of zoning appeals on December the tenth, um, twenty twenty-five, four special exceptions and two variances. Two, six, zero, seven, Hickory Street is requesting a special exception, um, to reduce the interior yard setback from seven feet to three feet to construct a detached, single-family dwelling. Sixteen oh four Richmond Avenue is requesting a special, a variance, um, to authorize a reduction, a reduction of the minimum required front yard setback from twenty-five feet to nine four, nine point four feet to increase the size of a front porch to a detached, um, single-family dwelling. Then we have thirty-three oh six Mascot Street, which is a request of a special exception to, um, authorize a reduction of a minimum required rear yard setback from twenty-five feet to twelve feet to construct an addition on a non-conforming structure. Then we have four Neptune Court, which is requesting a variance to authorize a reduction of a minimum, required, minimum required rear yard setback from thirty feet to twenty feet, twenty-two feet to construct the addition on a rear oven and sixteen dwelling. Uh, we have sixteen twenty-nine King Street, which is requesting a special exception, um, to authorize a, um, minimum interior side yard setback from twenty feet to five point two, five feet to construct, conduct, excuse me, to construct a detached, single-family dwelling. And then we have sixteen twenty-five King Street, which is also requesting the same of a minimum interior side yard setback from twenty feet to five point two, five feet. These are all the cases that will be appearing before the board of zoning appeals on December the twentieth, uh, tenth, excuse me. If there are any questions, I stand by for those now.
I have a question. Would I be putting you on the spot if I asked you in general, your opinion of when they come asking these, for these setbacks? In my humble, inexperienced opinion, it sort of toggles the, um, various points. Because you have one who's has the setbacks as previously zoned and you have another who's, well, I don't want that much setback. So it's like a, it's one, one back, two up. I just wonder, what, what is your opinion? Or you ain't really give it because you shouldn't be giving.
Right.
I'll probably answer my own question.
You could speak to the development potential of these narrow-lot properties if they don't have setbacks.
Right. Well, if, if they don't have the setbacks, are not able to meet the setbacks that are required, then, you know, we would not, you know, recommend approval for those. Um, yeah. Okay.
All right, those are all of our items. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. We still have the nomination of offices for the 2026 calendar. So we need to, because we don't have a December meeting, we need to do the nominations in here, and then we will actually do the election when we go into the works, uh, public hearing.
And do we, do we need a quorum in order to do the nominations?
You have a quorum.
Oh, yeah, okay, I thought we needed...
Four.
Four, okay, myself, okay, perfect. Okay, we will open the floor for nominations for the chair and vice chair.
Let me be quickly to say, I'm not interested in either position, so let me make that clear.
And I believe I can, I can do another term as chair, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Definitely.
I've nominated myself for vice chair.
Any other nominations?
She needs a second.
Well, I'll second her, that's fine.
Thank you.
I guess I can nominate myself.
Just somebody.
To do this again.
How many, how many years do you have left on your...
I don't know.
No, you, he still can do, he can do two terms as a chairman. So he just, this year.
One term.
Yes, yes.
And, and let me just weigh in, I'm weighing in all the day.
Appreciate it.
I just, I just always want to make sure we understand you need to be a resident of the city of Portsmouth, or your business is located in the city of Portsmouth. I just wanna put that out there to make sure we all understand that. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner G. So for the slate, I have Commissioner G. is nominated for the chairman for the 2026, and Shonda Taylor is nominated for the vice chairman for the 2026. Okay? We'll do the election when we get into the public hearing. Okay?
All right, everybody, five minutes, get yourselves together.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to welcome you all to a very important meeting today, Tuesday, November 18th, 2025, in the City of Portsmouth City Council chambers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, we will now have roll call. Please indicate your presence electronically. Four members of the Planning Commission are present.
Commissioners, before you are the minutes of the October 7th, 2025, public hearing. If there aren't any changes, we are in need of a, of a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the October the 7th, 2025 meeting, and you will be voting electronically. The minutes are, the minutes are approved by a vote of four to zero. Items reviewed today will be presented to City Council for their action at their January the 13th, 2026, public hearing, or as otherwise noted. Announcements of future meetings and conferences. No applications were received for the December Planning Commission meeting, therefore, our next scheduled work session is Tuesday, January the 6th, 2026, at 12:30 PM, City Council Conference Room, followed by public hearing at 1:30 PM, City Council Chamber. Planning Commission rules limit a speaker up to five minutes to speak. We also ask that everyone please silence your cellphones if you have not already done so. Our first item, CBE-25-02 Green Acres. G. and R. Stone request a Chesapeake Bay exception to construct a swimming pool within the 100-foot buffer of the Resource Protection Area at 2811 Acres Road. The property is Zoned General Residential GR and is further described as Tax Map 773, Parcel 14. The future land use map of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property for low-to-medium-density, single-family residential uses. The staff coordinator is Valerie Malzone. This item was deferred from our October the 7th, 2025, public hearing. Will the applicant or representative for this application please come forward and present your application at this time?
How y'all doing? Can you hear me now? Sorry.
Yes.
All right, Commissioners, thank you again for your time today. I want to respectfully address a key point in the staff reporting regarding the permitting history of pools around Lake Gene. I understand that the staff located three pools previously mentioned in the immediate area and concluded that they predate the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Act because of the early city aerials begin in 2003. However, in addition to the pools, I also submitted several other examples directly to the commission using widely available historic aerial imagery online. These additional properties clearly show pools being constructed after the adoption of the act. Even if it turns out that the pools in the staff's report or those I provided were constructed without the proper approvals, I want to emphasize that I am here today to follow regulations properly, requesting a variance from the commission. I clearly want to, I also want to clearly, that I believe is important point that the intent of the act, the act was not created to prohibit all development within 100-foot buffer. If that were the intent, it simply would not include a variance process. Instead, establish standards and guidelines to ensure that the development occurs responsibly and with appropriate mitigations. That is why there are specific criteria for exceptions. Because of the authors of the act understood that many homes were built long before it existed, it would otherwise face an undue burden without a path forward. As you can see, my request is entirely within the 50-foot inland word... ...buffer and completely outside the C-word buffer. As you're aware, this distinction is important because the C-word buffer is the area the act treats as the most environmentally sensitive and restrictive. The landwood buffer, as designed, allows for consideration of improvements through the variance process when appropriate mitigation is provided. My application stays fully out of the protected C-word area, and it fits squarely within the type of request the variance process was created to evaluate and allow. My request does not seek any special privilege. It is simply ask the allowable and reasonable consideration that the act itself provides for property owners whose homes were recreated long before the regulations existed. My application follows these guidelines exactly, and there are several areas goes beyond what is required. As you see in my materials, I provided more plant units than are required for a variance, exceeding the environmental mitigation expect, expectations. My goal has always been to ensure that any improvement adds to the, adds no additional harm and is ideally, and is ideally result in a net environmental benefit. I fully respect and understand the planning department cannot approve a variance that has, and that this responsibility falls solely on the commission. My goal today is simply to provide the full inaccurate information you need to make your decision and to demonstrate that I believe my request is consistent past approvals within the city, to, to, to the extent that they were properly permitted and fully aligns with the framework the acts allow. I also want to emphasize that I am, I am willing to make reasonable adjustments on the spot should the commission feel more comfortable with a specific change or addition to the plan. Thank you again for your time, your attention, and your willingness to review the materials I provided. I'll stand by for any questions.
Commissioners, do you have any questions of the applicant? Commissioner Jiggett's?
Not of the applicant, but I do have a question of the, the planning department. Specifically, I guess this was under Ms. Malzone, and maybe I'm overlooking it. I know what the recommendation was the last time. What is the recommendation still?
The staff recommendation continues to be denial for the same reasons presented at the last meeting.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any additional questions?
Thank you, sir.
I think you have one more.
You're good.
I'm done?
Yes, yes, sir, thank you.
Bye.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item CBE-25-02. I have one speaker, Donna Biggs. You may come forward, state your name and your address for the record, and you will have up to five minutes to speak.
My name is Donna Biggs, and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. And I was wondering what kind of creek that was. I didn't get any information from the Planning Commission to let me know about what's going on here, and I feel like that we, the people, need to be informed about what's going on here because, as you can see in, in our organizational chart, we, the people, are up here, and we tell y'all what to do. So I didn't get any information ahead of time so I could talk about things in a reasonable way, but there's a creek there or something, but the man, the people own property all around it. When they own property, it's their property, okay? And if they want a swimming pool, hey, they have a right to have a swimming pool. The government can't tell them what to do with their property unless you didn't, you have that area next to it where nobody could buy any property. Plus, he's gonna have to pay taxes, all right? So that's another thing. We're being taxed without any representation. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Biggs. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item CBE-25-02. If there's anyone here who did not get an opportunity to register and would like to address this application, you may come forward, state your name and your address for the record, and you will have up to five minutes to speak. Appearing to be none, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, this public hearing is now closed.
Commissioners, is there any more discussion? If not, we're in need of a motion and a second?
I would like to... I would just like to make a comment before we take the vote, and I think this is, this is a tough one because we're homeowners and we certainly empathize with the applicant. But this is, this is, this was my thought. If we do it for one homeowner after the wetlands have made their decisions, and I guess I would ask Attorney Miller this question, because to me, we would then have no choice but to every other in this area, homeowner who wants to put in a swimming pool, are we not bound to also afford them that same opportunity? Without getting into a litigation venue?
I think...
And I need you to speak louder. I don't know if it's me today, but...
I, I think that isn't a concern, but I think also that every application can be taken on its, on its own face, and the rules applied to it individually.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioners, any additional discussion? If not, we, the chair is prepared to entertain a motion. Commissioner Mollven?
Motion to deny.
Second. Taylor.
Madam Sec, we have a motion and a second, Madam Sec, or Madam Secretary, we have a motion and a second?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Motion and second to deny CBE-25-02, and you will be voting electronically. The motion is three to one, to deny. Our next item?
So that means you're never gonna approve another pool in this city ever again? I'm within the law to allow me in the inward 50. The Planning Commission knows that. I mean, that's, that's just ridiculous to say no when there are pools out there. The Planning Commission only did around the lake that were there. I've gone and I've given them a number of photos before and after. 2010, a photo of no pool. 2014, a pool.
I do apologize, sir, but the, the motion has been carried through already.
I don't think you guys had got enough of information from them. You know, the 100-foot buffer, there's a 50 buffer that you're allowed to, and the statute...
We, we are very aware.
The law allows that, so why...
We, we are very aware, and it's, it's, though it's permitted, it's advised not to happen within that area. Based on some of those motions, based on some of the statements you heard earlier, we are, we are not setting a precedent. Though each, each item can be looked at individually, it still does set a precedent. The reason it was deferred last month, to see if in your area, very similar houses within that 50-foot buffer zone, if they were also built after that time period that the law went into effect. That's why we deferred it last month. It was seen that those three had not been built after that, that law went to effect, and that was one of the main reasons, I know I personally voted, along with the motion.
Okay, so is the city plant development only for that area, or are they for the city lot?
We look at each, we look at each area individually, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
I do understand.
You're, you're under, you're not, under no obligation to respond at this point in time.
But this, you know, and, and so somewhere else in the city, they can build a pool. They know that they're within 50 feet of it. I mean, it's just, you know, I pay my taxes, you know, and everything else, and so now, like I said, everything else has to, has to be, say no to everybody in the city. Who do I take it up to next? What's, what's next appeal?
We can proceed. Our next case is UP-25-11 Newport. M. Vonnable requests a use permit to construct townhouse dwellings and multifamily dwellings on the property at 3741 Elliott Avenue in the Conditional Multifamily Urban Residential URMK zoning district. The property is owned by Newport Property Investors LLC and is further identified as Tax Map 524, Parcel 1. The future land use map of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property for mixed residential uses. The staff coordinator is Valerie Malzone. Will the applicant or representative for this application please come forward and present your application at this time?
Good afternoon. Chairman G., fellow planning commissioners and staff. My name is Tim Callpepper. I'm with Canopy Development, address, business address is 208, 208 East Plume Street in Norfolk. I'm also a principal with Newport Property Investors. I appreciate your time this afternoon. I just wanted to give you just a, a brief background on Newport. This is a, a master plan development that was originally rezoned over 20 years ago. Our particular portion of Newport, also known as Newport Phase Two, has, for the last 20-plus years, sat as a fallow undeveloped site within the city. We acquired the site via tax auction earlier this year, and that was after several failed auction attempts pre... and that was after several failed auction attempts previously. We've done some other projects within the city. We also developed the Afton Green community in Craddock and are excited about moving Newport Phase Two forward. A couple of things that I, that I just wanted to point out. This, this property, as I mentioned, was a master planned community. There is a, a design guidelines, a proffered design guideline books associated with all of the development with the Newport. Our development, as you can see, the master plan is substantially conforming with the plan that was proposed twenty years ago. That was also confirmed by the zoning administrator back in June. We asked for a zoning determination confirmation, which he, which he provided and confirmed it was in substantial conformance with the existing zoning case. Part of that confirmation specifically stated that the housing types were conforming, meaning the attached townhomes and the attached, what we call two-over-two units, the stacked townhomes that are proposed within Newport Phase Two. So specifically those unit types and the existence of those unit types that were found to be conforming with the, with, with, with the original zoning case. So we are here today asking for a conditional use permit to allow us to continue our development of Newport Phase Two. We are, this is a, a very unique parcel within the city. It's a strategic parcel within the city located directly adjacent to one of the largest economic drivers in the city, which is the Rivers Casino. We acquired the site back in February. I will tell you, since February, we have taken, we don't have all twenty years' worth of illegal dumping disposed of, but we have about fourteen years that we've, that we've dealt with. We still have a little more work to do out there. But what will ultimately get this area cleaned up and, and become what was proposed back twenty years ago is our continued development of the area. There is a strong housing need in Portsmouth. This goes a long way towards filling that void, especially for, for affordable housing within the city. So we're fortunate. Behind me will be Melissa Venable, who is with Land Planning Solutions. That is our civil engineering firm and our land planning company that, that drew our conceptual plan. You see there on the right, unique to this and probably a first in my twenty-five-year career of development, is Ms. Venable was also involved in the design team in two thousand and five and six that originally came up with the Newport concept. So we're happy to have her involvement and would ask for your support today. And I'll remain, I'll stand by for questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Melissa Venable. Thank you all for your service to the city of Portsmouth. My work address is fifty-eight fifty-seven Harborview Boulevard in Suffolk, Virginia. And ironically, I started my business twenty-two years ago after working on this project along with a couple others, for LM Sanders, and kind of fell in love with Hampton Roads from the Washington DC area. I had worked for the Sartre Architectural Group. Those hand drawings were done by my hand late at night. And so it's really exciting for me to see this project not only come to fruition and see just this afternoon or this, before I came over today, I drove through again, phase one, to see how it's matured. And I think it's, in my opinion, my personal opinion, it's done a really nice job. It's a beautiful architecture. It's really neat to see the drawings that were put in place in twenty-two twenty-two, and approved again in twenty-twenty-six, I'm sorry, two thousand and two, two thousand and six. It was, I think, finally approved in the zoning. It's really neat to see the, the architectural graphics that were pulled together come to life. And again, the, the mature trees look great. The architecture looks great. So I'm excited to be able to be here in front of you today and see the expansion of the development of the second phase of that come along. I wanted to answer one of the questions that came up in the pre-meeting. The, the water lines throughout the development, which to me would be the most important part of the utilities, the water lines will all be new water lines in phase two. There aren't any exist, we're replacing all the roadways. I think Elliott is the only roadway that runs through that property, whereas in phase one, there were some existing roadways and utilities. There'll be all new water lines in phase two, if that's helpful. There's a water line in Missy Elliott Drive, but sanitary sewer has to be pulled up through Missy Elliott and then will connect to some existing sanitary sewer. But otherwise, all the water lines will be new water lines within phase two, if that's helpful to one of the questions that came up previously. But the architecture that we submitted, as you know, just to back, background a little bit, the zoning is approved for this property, but a CUP is required for townhomes and multifamily. So that's what we're here today is for the CUP, the conditional use permit, to continue to work within that zoning to build the townhomes and the multifamily units that were proposed in the original zoning. So we've submitted the architecture for that. We believe it's in line with what was set up in the design guidelines back in two thousand and six. The other thing that I wanted to ask today of you is that there were, with the, with the, the conditions set up, there were a few exceptions. And I was gonna ask, or I'm sorry, there were some conditions requested. I was going to ask, and I hope you receive them, for exceptions to those conditions. And if you don't mind, I can run through those publicly. Okay. So one of the, one of the parcels, thank you for putting this up. Parcel B is a very small piece, and there's multifamily units on that parcel. They're multifamily because it's that stacked unit, so they can't be sold as fee simple. They are stacked. So when you, when you have to draw that subdivision line around that, that small area exceeds the twenty-five, the allowable twenty-five dwelling units per acre. And that has to be subdivided out because of the public roads that sit around it. So I would ask for an exception that, just on that one parcel, that you would allow us to exceed twenty-five dwelling units per acre. And, and the reason, again, that's set up the way it is, is it, those units will face Missy Elliott. They won't turn their back to Missy Elliott, but they'll face it. They'll have an alley behind it, so you won't see the garage doors. And then the other side will face another public street. So it's just by nature of the way it's designed, it will slightly exceed the twenty-five dwelling units per acre. But as an overall neighborhood, we're well under the twenty-five dwelling units per acre. And I'd hope that we look at that as a, as if, you know, the phase two is one neighborhood. That will all fall well below, I think it's below twenty-one dwelling units per acre in total. So I would ask for an exception to that one condition. Secondly, I would like to ask that we eliminate the, the requirements for surveillance. That would be a very expensive ask. I believe you've asked for surveillance in the past on multifamily rental projects. This isn't a rental project. This is a for-sale project. And if any of the units as a cluster were to turn into a multifamily, then, then we would suggest that the surveillance would have to be required. But in this case, this is all individual lots that would be for sale. So I would ask that we wouldn't have that requirement of surveillance on those lots or on those homes. And then the last condition. Your use permits give us two years, and I would request one of two things, that we could extend that to four years. Our, our desires are to get the CUP approved, to get the engineering plans approved, and start construction. And then, then there is no need for that request. But as you know, and you've watched large projects come to fruition, they take a while. Just getting the, the site plan approvals and getting the building permits, unfortunately, at times, can turn into a two-year process. And then we would be back in front of you again in the middle of that, trying to get bank lending and trying to get things closed and having to come back through this process again. So I'd ask that we could extend that time period to four years or that the trigger, this approval doesn't, the clock doesn't start ticking until we get our final site plans approved. So there are the three requests that we have, along with the approval of the CUP. I know that's a lot of information, so I'll stand by for questions once the public hearing is closed. But I thank you so much for your service to the community, and I look forward to talking with you further on this.
Commissioners, do you have any questions of the applicants?
Yes, I do. I would like them both to come back to the podium, please. And I'm sorry, sir, would you give me your name again, please?
Yes, ma'am. It's Tim Callpepper.
Callpepper, that's what I thought. First of all, I want to say that, that development, Afton, I just, when I go by it, I just smile. That's, that's a beautiful development. And I do believe, if memory serves me correctly, Danny Meeks was very much involved in that project at some point, was he not? Or...
Danny was one of the previous owners of one of the parcels of the Afton Green development.
Yeah, yeah. It's beautiful, beautiful project, as well as Newport. Beautiful project. Love them both. Did you, for the Newport, what you're proposing, did you get any feedback from what I'm gonna call the HMO or HMO or what you would call the, those, the homeowners association, I think they have out there? Did you get feedback from them on this project?
We have not had any, any feedback from, from the HOA of Newport.
Did you seek feedback?
We, we did, we, there were notices sent to adjacent homeowners associations and other adjacent property owners. But we, we did not receive any, any feedback at all that I'm, that I'm aware of. And we would, phase two, Newport Phase Two would have a homeowners association. We would have an architectural review board as part of that HOA. And we, we would have, Newport Phase Two would have its own amenity base. We'd have our own walking paths and, and other amenities within Newport Phase Two, so...
In my opinion, you would have been more served to have reached out to the president of their HOA or homeowners association, I think. That would have been wise, to seek their input because that's the adjacent venue properties. And having, having more support can never harm you. It can only help you. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Melvin?
Good afternoon. Thank you, ma'am, for mentioning the pipes and answering my question. For your exceptions, how long does it take for you all to usually survey? You were saying that you would like a exception to either get the survey done and then for us to do two years or just four years altogether before you submit another application?
Right. So we're in the process now of working through the site plans. As a matter of fact, one of the changes that, that was mentioned during the meeting was because of a comment received for one of the site plans, or for, for, one of the comments that we need to address for site plans, which changed some configurations around. So we're in the process of working through the site plans now. I think the building permits is often, can take a little bit longer than we hoped. And I can give you an example. Heatwall, Dan Heatwall had, was going through, went through rezoning with you and a CUP. And as they were getting final site plan approval, their CUP expired and had, they had to come back to you just a couple of years ago. So we really, we just don't want for that to have to happen. And, and he worked continuously. There was never a pause. But with different easements that have to take place and recordations of these different parcels, it just gets complicated. So again, we'd like for that to be less than two years. We believe we'll do it within two years. But what we don't want to have to do is have a hiccup and be right on that cusp of that timeframe. So we were asking for four years, like I said, or the possibility that the clock doesn't start to tick until we get site plan approval for that, the condition that would be in place. Does that make sense?
Yes, it makes sense. So pretty much four years altogether. Is two years, Dr. Russell, a set timeframe that we usually do for applicants?
Yes, sir. The two years is prescriptive in the ordinance and the, and the only reason I know is because the project that was just mentioned with, with Heatwall, the litmus test is the foundation. A foundation has to be in place. This is kind of odd because it's, you know, multiple parcels. And, and there are a number of ways you can do it. You know, as suggested, you could also provide for two one-year administrative extensions requested by writing of the applicant. I think that serves the same purpose without having to be formally acted on by the city council. And that, that's what I would suggest because oftentimes with, with projects that receive CUPs, we, we get requests by adjacent property owners, community members about status. And that just keeps everyone keenly aware of where the project is at any given stage after the two-year timeframe.
Okay, so can you break, can you simplify that?
Two years, one, two, two years, which they, they, they get, which is, you know, standard in our ordinance, and add two one-year administrative extensions by request, and by written request.
Okay. Would you recommend that? I was thinking of compromising to three years. I'm sure that the ordinance had that for accountability purposes, the two-year mark. Would you recommend what you had mentioned, or would three, three years be even simpler? Yes, 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 ma'am.
Miller just shared with me. He said, he said you could do four years or you could do the, the, either way. Either way works.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your response.
You can, the commission has the flexibility to extend the expiration date to four years without the administrative, the administrative request. Or you could do the two years and any number of administrative extensions.
Yep. What I'm trying to understand is, in the ordinance, why was two years the suggestion? Was it for accountability purposes? Like the applicant, accountability purpose to, to building site, and they will have to come back up here and do the whole process over so that that commission or that council in the future is aware and can ensure that they're doing what they need to do? Or was that just arbitrary number that's, that was just put out there?
I doubt that it was arbitrary. More than likely, it's for accountability. And then to, you know, if a project moves forward and it had significant public opposition, it does give the community members, the surrounding community members, an opportunity to weigh in for reconsideration of the project if it's going to move forward.
Okay. I would, I would like to compromise with you all and see if we can do, instead of four years, three years? Is that okay with you all? Do you think you can make that work?
Yeah, that's, that's fine. Our, our primary concern is the, the, the timing on the conditional use permit starts at approval of the conditional use permit. But our timing from a development standpoint doesn't begin until we get development plans approved. And we're still a little unclear of the schedule to obtain that approval. We're in that, that process now. So that, that was our primary concern. Three years would be fine. Thank you for that consideration.
Yes, and I want to do three years just for accountability purposes. But also, you know, I'm pretty sure during, God forbid, but during COVID time, you will probably extend the applications. Yep. So I want to make sure that four doesn't turn to five. And then costs go up tremendously for all parties involved here. So I think three years is a good compromise. And then for the extension, you said twenty-five foot. You want to go past the twenty-five?
So, so for that small parcel B, that's the only parcel where we would ask if we, if you would allow us to go over the twenty-five dwelling unit per acre cap, just in that small parcel B, which is, again, kind of silly that we're just looking at that in a microcosm. But the way we're gonna have to develop the public roads around it, that little piece will end up being more than twenty-five dwelling units per acre. But, but when you look at the whole neighborhood, all of Newport Phase Two, we're well under twenty-five dwelling, dwelling units per acre. It's just when that piece gets subdivided, it will exceed the twenty-five dwelling units per acre.
Extended by how much?
It'll be twenty-six point nine dwelling units per acre.
Oh, okay. That's fair enough. Yep, that's good.
I just want to remind the commissioners that at the time that we make the motion, keep in mind the changes you're looking to make because what's applicable is gonna be what the motion is that's made at that time. So that's gonna be key. Were you done, Commissioner Melvin?
Done. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Commissioner Jiggs?
Yes, and I, in all, in all reality, the name of the game is to make sure there is not procrastination from the developers. I mean, you know, I'm keeping it real. And to stay with the timeline that the planning department has recommended, that would be the way I would go on this motion. This is not the time to be negotiating three years, four years. No, not now. Not, please. I'm just making my opinion known. I don't need any, for me, I don't need any further feedback on it because there'll be plenty of time as we move down the road. If there is obstacles that need to be addressed, those can be addressed with counsel at the appropriate time. That, those are my singular, my opinion. Thank you. Thank you.
Commissioners, any additional questions or comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item UP dash 25 dash 11. I do have one speaker, Donna Biggs, you may come forward, state your name and your address for the record, and you will have up to five minutes to speak.
Good afternoon, my name is Donna Biggs, I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. It's interesting that, you know, we're not informed ahead of time for us to make, say, nobody's here to talk and give their ideas on this, I'm just really thinking about, are they going to have an organizational chart where the children and youth and adults will have some oversight to make sure that they are, there was an organized system so that people know they have a place, that they can go outside, or they have a conference room, or something that makes family the focus of this experiment? Is the state also part of this as well as what Newport is, is, is part of the state program I'm assessing? Talking about affordable housing, well, what about the homeless that we're having in Portsmouth? Are there going to be a section of dormitories for homeless people so they can have a place to get back on their feet? Are they going to be part of the Portsmouth at work? So if you're going to think about affordable housing, think about the people who are having a problem of readjusting to life, and what we're seeing, from what I'm seeing, that World War II caused the women to go back to work, and that created an issue of, of family life being disintegrating. And so we have to start thinking about our families, and I'm seeing an age group needing places to live. And if you're going to build all these apartments and townhouses and taking up all that land, what about having a dormitory for the homeless commission? Because their meeting just wasn't very well organized to take care of the people. So why don't we think about everybody in our city? So, I know, y'all gonna vote, but you don't have a quorum if you have four folks that vote and three vote, that's not a quorum, three does not make a quorum.
Commissioner Jiggett?
No disrespect, ma'am, but it reminds me of that saying, anywhere but not in my neighborhood. That's all I'm gonna say. And I could recall a project that there was some comments from persons in the neighborhood, and they did not want to see that project move forward, but I would just say, that's all I have to say. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, I actually did have one question for the applicant, and I, Ms. Biggs actually made me remember this, as I look at this, we're, we're looking at, was it two park, two park areas and then the clubhouse, is that correct on the new?
Yeah, there's, there's, there's several open space areas within our plan, you can see some open space areas in parcel A and parcel C. Similarly, there's the, the large stormwater lake, if we can go back to the, the big concept plan, yeah, our plan is on the right, you can see the, there we go. There's, there's several open space parcels throughout the community, there are, there's a clubhouse and pool amenity that is programmed for, just on the south side of the large stormwater lake, you can see a, a red building denoted there, and then on the opposite end is a, is a walking area, gazebo, there'll be paths around all the lakes, there's also a, a dog park area and another pocket park up towards DeKalb Avenue. So there, so there are multiple open space areas and planned amenities throughout the community.
Perfect, thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
If it helps, there's more, we've doubled the amount of open space than what was in the original plan.
Oh, great.
Thank you for that.
Yep, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item UP dash 25 dash 11. If there's anyone here who did not get an opportunity to register and would like to address this application, you may come forward, state your name and your address for the record, and you will have up to five minutes to speak. Appearing to be none, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission, this public hearing is now closed.
Commissioners, is there any additional discussion? I will add, it's interesting to me, I purchased my house in 2007, right south of this, back when it was the original plans. This is my second time serving on the planning commission, I remember the last time we, we talked about this area. I'm hoping and praying if we vote that this finishes, I'm sick of seeing empty land down the street, and I appreciate the trash getting picked up, but it's just really full circle to me to see this come, three is a magic number, as they said in the old song, so I'm hoping that this third time's the charm and, and that we can see these to completion this project. Commissioners, any, any additional questions or thoughts? We are in need of a motion, I'm looking at you, Commissioner Melvin, because I know you wanted to make some changes.
Thank you, Chairman. A motion to improve application UP TAC 25, TAC 11, with proposed conditions to allow the use permit to expire or become void after three years from the date of, of approval by city council, and to note for parcel B to not let parcel B exceed 27 dot zero dwelling units per acreage.
Second.
All right, we, we have a motion and a second, Madam Secretary?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion to approve UP dash 25 dash 11 with conditions to allow the expiration three years after the city council date, and you will be voting electronically. This item, this item is approved by a vote of three to one.
And, and let me have, let me just, I was all for approving this, and my only exception is I felt we should go with the plant, planning department's original recommendations, that's the only reason I'm voting against it. We should have stayed with that recommendation, thank you.
Understood, and I was, I did want to comment for Commissioner Melvin, I appreciate the fact that you did set limits on them and not make them boundless for both portions that you edited, because oftentimes we find ourselves just opening stuff up, so though you did make a change to Commissioner Jiggett's point, at least you set those changes to be a set amount.
Correct, and Chairman, just want to note that that approval also was for the proposal item number five, correct?
Correct.
Even though it didn't say, I want to make sure that, that was for the, the rental community, they mentioned that they wanted to modify in the event that the multifamily units are a rental community under common ownership, that they've agreed, agreed to provide surveillance.
The surveillance portion.
So we agree to that?
That was my understanding.
Okay, just want to make sure, because I didn't say it, but I just want to make sure it was, it was applied.
Wait, could you clarify it again? So you're saying that the security portion was included, that they would need to, or only under rental?
I want to make sure that was applied, that we approved their modification that in the event the multifamily units were to become a rental community under common ownership, that they, that the agreement will provide surveillance.
Mr. Miller, do we, how, how would we address to make sure that commissioners did vote under the correct understanding of, of that motion?
I don't think there was an actual, there, there's a condition five, I, I don't think the motion did anything to the existing condition five.
And it didn't, it didn't speak to it one way or the other?
Right, so.
We need a separate motion that addresses condition five?
Change condition five.
Condition five and condition three, I'm just looking off of what they, what they stated here. Item number five, condition, it says condition three in paragraph four, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Dr. Miller. Okay, so condition number five, without limitation, before initially operating the multifamily dwelling development, the applicant shall install digital video equipment with recording devices and capability sufficient to include, include date and time that recording is made with surveillance coverage encompassing the front, sides, and rear exteriors of the establishment for 24 hours per day, seven days a week. Recorded data must be maintained in a condition permitting review of the information for no less than 30 days.
So for clarity, what the chair is asking, the way the motion was stated, he only specified on two conditions, he didn't say all conditions, so what we would be looking for is an additional motion for the additional conditions, and if there's an edit needed to be made to condition five, that needs to be stated in that motion, because we didn't, he didn't say with conditions, he specifically spoke to the two conditions that the applicant asked for edits on. Does that sound correct? Trying to pull my Roberts out right now. Or, or would a new, the initial motion be struck, but we can't because it's already gone into record?
Yeah, I think you could, I think you could have a new motion, someone who voted for the original motion can move to reconsider, and then you can just modify the motion. So you'd need a vote to reconsider that gets approved, and then you'd need a new motion that essentially encapsulates what Mr. Melvin said.
Perfect.
With additional of all conditions.
I'll do that, I'll modify, it's, it's easy that way, just modify.
Okay, so you, so, so you're moving for a vote to reconsider?
Correct, that's just to make sure we get this right.
Do we have a second on, on the motion to vote to reconsider?
Second.
All right, Madam Secretary?
Just so I'm clear, so is he changing?
We're, we're gonna go, we're, we're, we're making a vote right now to, to do it all over?
Do it all over again.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, we have, okay, we need a motion.
We have a motion, second.
We have a motion and a second, and we will be voting electronically.
And this is a motion to reconsider, so redo, to do a redo.
Okay.
He didn't get mine, come on.
Hold on, one second. You ready? Okay, oh, nope.
She's got to clear it off of the screen first.
Yeah, I think it's clear.
Don't. No.
He's coming out there.
But they would just.
If you have a motion to reconsider, do it back.
Okay. Okay, you may be. of four to zero. Okay, now we need a motion.
So at this point, we'll entertain a motion, and we need to make sure we include all the conditions with whatever changes need to be made throughout those.
And, and you can go slowly so that I'll make sure, once you give the motion, that I read it back correctly. All right, I'm ready.
Thank you, apologize for that, just want to make sure it refers to everyone. Okay, so a motion to approve UP TAC 25, TAC 11, proposed conditions to allow use permit to expire or become void after three years from the date of approval by city council, and note for parcel B for not to exceed 27 dot zero dwelling units per acreage, and for the modification of condition three or five to state that in the event the multifamily units are a rental community under common ownership, that they will agree to provide surveillance, no surveillance is required on privately owned units.
I'm gonna do the best I can with this.
And, and you did say to accept the other conditions, right?
You said.
Correct, I, I did all.
And we, so we need a second?
He made the most, yeah, we need a second.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, got a motion and a second, to approve UP dash 25 dash 11 with conditions, change to conditions three and five to allow the expiration three years after the city council date, and also with the parcels not to exceed the 27 point zero acres, under the, it's, this, help me here, under the com, I think it was common ownership, no surveillance cameras is needed. If that's not.
Except for in the instance where it becomes a rental property.
An instance where they become collective rental properties. Okay, and you will be voting electronically.
Unreadiness on the motion.
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Jiggett?
My question is to Attorney Miller. And you, I think you know probably what my question is, because I don't want to see city of Portsmouth get into any type of litigation, because we are doing this three-year, when ordinance I think says two. So are you able to answer that question now, and do we just have to move forward and decide our vote?
Yes, ma'am, the city, the zoning ordinance actually allows city council to change the two years at the initial time of approval, so it can be, so what you've recommended is consistent with the authority that city council has under the zoning ordinance upon adoption of the use permit.
I think you're saying, I'm sorry, repeat it once again, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the, the Portsmouth zoning ordinance allows city council to modify the two-year term.
Okay.
And so I think you've not acted inconsistently with the rights that council has in your recommendation.
Okay, because you know, I love to practice law without a license, and I just want to make sure we are in good content, thank you.
You will be voting electronically. This item is approved by a vote of four to zero with the mentioned, uh, conditions, four mentioned conditions. Mr. Chairman?
We actually are in need of one additional motion, or two additional motions, one on the.
The calendar.
One on the nomination and, on the election of new officers, as well as one on the, the approval of the 2026 planning calendar, it's a third, and a third on the resolution. So we have a little bit of additional business, commissioners?
Okay, which one, we're gonna go first?
If we could address the election of officers first.
Okay, all right. The election of officers for the 2026 planning commission is as follows, our nominations for our chairman is Commissioner G., and for our vice chairman is Commissioner Taylor, and we'll be doing these separately.
So for the first one, the vice chairman, Commissioner Taylor's, Commissioner Taylor for our vice chairman, and you will be voting electronically.
Motion to approve.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah.
So we have a motion and a second?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second.
Second.
And we will be voting electronically. Okay. This item is approved by four to zero, Vice Chairman Taylor. Our next item. The nomination for our chairman for the 2026 Planning Commission is Chairman G. I need a motion and a second. A motion, need a motion first.
Yep, we'll entertain a motion and a second.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the chairman, Chairman G., for our chairman of the 2026 Planning Commission, and you will be voting electronically. This item is approved by a vote of four to zero. Our slate for the 2026 Planning Calendar Commission is Vice Chairman Taylor and Vice and Chairman G.
Thank you all for trusting me for another year. Pray that my calmness will stay here for the next 12 months. We will now entertain a motion on the approval of the 2026 Planning Calendar.
Motion to approve the 2026 calendar.
And we'll take a second as well?
Second.
We have a motion and a second?
We have a motion and a second, and we will be voting electronically. The approval of the 2026 planning calendar is approved by a vote of four to zero.
Okay, now the link. Where has you got that?
Do we, Mr. Miller, do we need to read the resolution?
Yes, I'd read the resolution into the record, please.
Okay. The ordinance reads resolution to initiate amendments to the zoning ordinance to be prepared by staff, Link District, whereas the City of Portsmouth zoning ordinance merits evolution and consideration of modifications whenever the public necessity, convenience, general welfare, or good zoning practice warrants. And whereas the zoning ordinance should be maintained as a living document, adjusting to the needs of the community. And whereas the city recently established the Link District, and it is necessary to consider amendments to modify the zoning regulations that apply to the district. And now therefore be it resolved by the Planning Commission of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia, the staff is instructed to prepare draft amendments to the zoning ordinance with an emphasis on the following issues. Modifying the zoning regulations applicable to the Link District to ensure that they encourage the type of development sought within the district. And number two, addressing any additional issues that staff determines to reasonably require the consideration of an amendment to the zoning ordinance by the Planning Commission and City Council, adopted by the Planning Commission of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia, at a meeting held on November the 18th, 2025.
So the chair will accept a motion on approval of the resolution?
Motion to approve.
We'll take a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Motion and second to approve the resolution to initiate amendments to the zoning ordinance, and you will be voting electronically. This item is approved by a vote of four to zero.
Commissioners, is there any additional business today? Dr. Russell, is there any further business? Hearing no additional business, this meeting is adjourned.